Sorry. It's that time of the evening. I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, May 29, 2024 Board of Education Regular Meeting. I will ask our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Mauricio, to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, everyone. Before I turn it over to our superintendent, I just want to thank the Board for their hard work during budget season and thank our Cabinet and our administration and our superintendent for all of the effort that went into a very, very successful budget season and congratulate all of you and the district on a successful passing of the budget.
Okay.
And Roger, it looks like you and I are in it for another three years. All right, take it away, Mary.
All right. So I want to echo our Board President comments about thanking the community for the wonderful vote of support last week during the budget process. It was a wonderful vote of approval. And also, I want to thank every single one of our Board Trustees for all the hard work since February. We were here late. We had many conversations, many discussions, and I want to thank all of you for volunteering to do this very important job of governance and to thank Roger and Catherine for, again, committing to be trustees for the next three years. It is a super important job filled with no money, water, and mints and under LED lights once every two weeks. That much we can guarantee you all. But the commitment to children and public education is paramount and just want to thank everyone and the entire administrative team for a tough but an excellent budget season. And again, once again, thank you to the community for the huge vote of support. Along those same lines, you know, the end of May into June is a super, super busy season. You can find yourself out and about almost every single night. First of all, I want to start by thanking our staff and students for a great OHS Day. Thank our PTA, our booster clubs, for all their hard work. And I particularly want to thank our central office team who spent the day at OHS Day, you know, being there, helping out with the dunk tank, helping out with a variety of different activities. It's so important, these capstone events, for our students. I want to thank our OHS marching band who were able to perform at Memorial Day, our AMD eighth graders who did an outstanding, I've heard from multiple people, anti-bias presentation to our Roosevelt students. Sometimes having older students present to younger students is the best message that happens to be there. So I want to thank our AMD eighth graders for doing that. For those of you who might have missed some of these announcements on social media, Osning High School students actually did an outstanding job at the highly prestigious BASH Awards. BASH stands for Broadcast Awards for Senior High School Students. They were held, I forget, but Rutgers University or...
On Long Island.
On Long Island. They were held on Long Island. But Osning High School students, first place for Best Public Service Announcement and second place in the Best Short Broadcast Character Category, I'm sorry, to OHS Noticias. Am I saying that correctly, Maria? No?
Yes.
Noticias, did I say it correctly?
Oh, Noticias.
Yeah. You would never know, I spent a semester at the University of Madrid and took Spanish for all my years in high school and two years in college. Do a much better job reading it, believe it or not, anyway. But I just want to thank the students for that. Earlier this evening at 5:00, we attended a wonderful, wonderful ceremony for our Osning High School Seal of Biliteracy recipients. The students not only get that seal on their diplomas, it's a beautiful gold seal, but they get a certificate, they get cords to wear at graduation, and this awesome medal with the State of New York seal on it because the Seal of Biliteracy was introduced through state legislation, signed by the governor. So students get that medal. So be prepared to look for that when we see our kids at graduation, they get to wear those. Claremont had their incoming third grade orientation last week, so I want to thank our wonderful, terrific Claremont principal, Frazin, for all your work in welcoming our new third graders. Roosevelt tonight, right now, as we speak, at this moment, is holding their Grade V orientation. Katie and Marila, Katie will head over here and Marila will finish up. Our wonderful spring concerts are taking place throughout their schools. I had a great opportunity to attend the Claremont Spring Concert, and it was terrific, terrific. Our Osning High School Enviro Team had two great days at the New York State Enviro-Thon Competition. They competed in forestry, wildlife, aquatics, soils, and current issues. Sounds very exciting. Would love to attend that next year. Congratulations to our 2024 for Metro Award nominees. That's a huge, huge accolade, the fact that we have two Metro Award nominees. Grace McGrath, who was nominated for Outstanding Comedian Performance by a Female Identifying Performer, and June Sallow, who was nominated for Outstanding Achievement in Graphic Design. So we're going to be cheering them on at the annual Metro Awards in June. We had 32, 32 Osning High School students who received prestigious accolades for their outstanding work in the media arts from the Lower Hudson region of the New York State Media Arts Teachers Association, 32, which is phenomenal. Osning High School held their Unified Field Day in collaboration with Hendrick Hudson School District, and it was absolutely beautiful. Thank you, Kim, and the high school team for all your work in that area. I also want to be a bit thank you to the AMD Junior National Honor Society for visiting Claremont School. So, events coming up, like I said, these are just some highlights. Tomorrow night, we have our Engineering Night, 6:30 at Osning High School, Osning Matters Disney Karaoke Fundraiser, June 1st, and we have our OHS Senior Sports Awards next week, our OHS Senior Awards, the Science Research Symposium, June 4th, and a Jazz Benefit Concert on June 10th at 7:00 p.m. to raise funds for the Osning High School Band trip to perform at the Pearl Harbor Ceremony in Hawaii. The Jazz Band got, the OHS Band actually got invited to do that, so we'll see if they raise the funds to go to Pearl Harbor. So, anyway, so I think that's absolutely wonderful. Right. Okay. That is my superintendent's update.
All right. Thank you very much. Test, 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 test. Can you guys hear me? Am I good? Okay. We will go ahead and move into our equity item on the agenda for the evening, which is our Long Range Plan update for the 23-24 school year with respect to our elementary schools. I think we're fortunate to have some wonderful guests here this evening to join us around the board table, and I will turn things over to them.
Okay. All right. So, as a commitment we made to this Board of Education and to the community in the fall that we will do, again, this fall, a very detailed, data-driven start to the year, what are we looking at, supported by data from the previous year, and then what are some areas that we will find challenging and how we're attempting to go through that? It's all based on our Long Range Plan, our Portrait of a Learner, and our mission and our beliefs. We thoroughly believe that that Portrait of a Learner gives great focus to our work. It enhances and enables every conversation we have, and it provides primary focus to our, believe it or not, our budget, which is our educational plan. Okay. Part of that, our four pillars, we could just jump, there we go. There are four pillars of the Long Range Plan, three original, and having family and community engagement added as the fourth. Each one of these pillars permeates, literally permeates, the regular work of the school district, whether or not it's on the evidency and efficacy visits, whether or not it's about learning walks, our professional learning community conversations. All four of these pillars are primary front and center in our work. So, like I mentioned, in the fall, we had two nights where we presented our commitment to the work for the school year with focus areas and the data we used to focus on those areas. In the spring, we're here, we're going to highlight successes, highlight areas we are still working on, and the evidence we have been using all year to review. It's not an analysis of that evidence that comes in the fall because the year's not done yet, we haven't finished everything, we don't have it all. But again, it's just the evidence we've been using each month, every marking period, to help sustain and move forward the decisions these wonderful leaders make each and every day. Okay. So now we are up to our first slide.
Hi, good evening, everybody. So you might recall the quotes that I'm about to share, and these were the quotes that we shared with you in the fall when we presented our action plans. And again, as a reminder, just to ground the conversation. So the first pillar that we're going to talk about is data literacy, and the quote says, and I'm sorry, I do need to turn around. Oh, thank you. Data in the hands of a few data experts can be powerful, but data at the fingertips of many is what will be truly transformational. And at Park School, data literacy has been very transformational. One of the things that we tried to do this year was really focus in on mathematics at Park School because we have ongoing sessions with our literacy coach, Lawrence, who works with us in our grade level teams to really unpack ARC and to support teachers in their implementation of ARC. So what was missing at Park was really time devoted to the mathematics. And so Ellie and I decided this year to really create PLCs, or Professional Learning Communities, centered around math. Each one of these meetings that we've had with our teachers, which happened at least four times already this year, focused on students' data. So that was at every single meeting point, it was always, portion of the time during our meeting was to look at, they had to look at their own student data. And teachers really came together to analyze questions in the data that are aligned to the upcoming units in the math curriculum. So for example, we looked at, in the beginning of the year, counting and cardinality as the beginning domains in kindergarten. And counting and cardinality have to do with identifying numbers, being able to write numbers, being able to count numbers with fluency. So we looked at those questions, data sets, and we analyzed those questions, and teachers use the guiding question of what strategies or resources can we use to address the standard to support and to enrich students during small group instruction? And we're going to talk a little bit about small group instruction later on. But that was the work that teachers did. So they actually created action plans for their small group work that they did with students. And we did students who were approaching, students who met standards, and students who were beyond the standards. So teachers left those meetings with very tangible action plans and/or activities that they would go back into their classrooms and do in small groups with their teaching assistants. So those were some of the positives, growth areas. I forgot to mention some of our next steps. I was going too fast. So you might notice in our slides, we have check marks next to the areas that we feel have been successful and the delta mark or the delta sign to really identify which are the areas that we want to come back to next year and continue to grow in, right? So, okay. So for example, one of the things that we really tried to do, or I tried to do this year, was really empower our math teacher leaders to support and lead this work through my organization, but really through their leadership and them really leading the conversations with their colleagues. It became this really collective efficacy of teachers really working together. So I think for next year, one of the things that we need to do is be more intentional about the planning time with our math teacher leaders so that they, as a group, have time to plan before we lead these PLCs. And also incorporate some of the same structures and format in the area of literacy. So we found that the math focus has been very successful. We want to continue some of the same things that we did this year with a focus on literacy next year. Sorry about that.
Good evening. So data literacy at Brookside, we, this year, we really, as teachers became more familiar with school pays data and school leaders as well, we really started to focus in on data talks specifically to students who aren't making the anticipated growth that they were supposed to make based on when they entered the classroom. So alongside school leaders, teachers met, we analyzed student data, and we created student-specific action plans for teachers to go back into their classrooms. We aligned it with the small group plans that ARC provides in the toolkits, and we had anticipated benchmarks that we should be meeting if everything was executed correctly. We also were more purposeful in sharing school-wide data through our weekly messages and creating an awareness school-wide of where we are as a school, right, throughout the school year, not just at the end. When thinking about things that we can do as our delta, is thinking now that we're in our, now that we're wrapping up our second year of implementation with school pays, we have data, historical data, to identify some trends to help us plan for professional development and any teacher supports that they may have that's evidenced in the data. So so far, what we're noticing at Brookside is that we're able to increase proficiency, we're able to decrease emergency, but for whatever reason, our at-risk percentage stays about the same. So when we're thinking, Lucia and I, for professional development for our teachers or what specific groups of students tend to fall into that at-risk category, then what supports can we put into place beginning in the school year, since this is a trend that we've identified for the past two years?
So I think what you might notice is similarities between all of our buildings. Thank you. This year, we consciously at Claremont gathered, interpreted, and used multiple sources of data in order to improve student achievement and learning. And so as Emily mentioned, how do you do that? What's the time for that? We began our year intentionally building a schedule to allow for this type of discourse. So for example, our Monday afternoon meetings are during the day ARC PLCs, Professional Learning Communities. And then there's something else we created this year called OWL Meetings. So OWL Meetings is a time during the day, OWL stands for Hour Wise Learners, and these meetings were really created for children. So as children meet with social workers and our assistant principal and our psychologist to delve deeply into social emotional issues, to talk about PBIS, to celebrate attendance, while that's happening, I'm able to then meet with their teachers and look at multiple forms of data. So what did we look at? We looked at state test data, we looked at school pays, NWEA, end-of-unit assessments, exit tickets, student work, rubrics, multiple benchmarks, multiple forms of data. And teachers looked at this data individually, student by student, they looked at it for their classroom, and then we looked at it for the whole grade to make sure that we understood the trends we were seeing. Every time we looked at a different piece of data, we were able to build to the story of every child, recognizing that every single student has strengths, and we were going to use these strengths to then help build areas of growth. And where applicable, we use the multilingual lens because we all know that a strength in one language helps us to then develop the second language. So all of this really deep look at data resulted in improved decision-making through every single tier of support. Looking at our school pays data this year, what we noticed is we increased the number of students in our proficiency band. We also significantly reduced the number of students in our at-risk band. Now, while our data at Claremont may show that our emergency band seems to have remained the same, we did see that students within this band made progress. Now, you must understand that by third grade, there are about seven levels within the emergency band, and by fourth grade, there's eight levels. Now, during those OWL PLCs that I mentioned earlier, teachers and I reviewed mathematics, whereas Emily talked about the domain of counting and cardinality, by third and fourth grade, we focused on two different domains. We focused on number and operations, which is, for us, addition, subtraction, multiplication, division, and then we focused on operations and algebraic thinking, which is taking those operations and really moving forward with them. And that's really the crux of what happens in third and fourth grade. So as we reviewed benchmarks and exit tickets and assessments, we determined areas of proficiency for mathematics, and then we also determined areas where we knew we needed to additionally scaffold for students. Math leaders worked with teachers to create vocabulary structures, to really start to use specific math domain vocabulary in addition to embedding real-world word problems for students to tackle. Moving forward with this work with data, we know we want to keep that intentional focus, but we will delve deeper into those specific subcategories of that data.
Thank you, and it's great to be here. I'm just coming from our incoming fifth grade orientation. I'm very excited to share some of the updates from Roosevelt around data literacy, which has been an area of focus this year, not just with our teachers, but also with our students. So one thing you'll notice even in the photo that you see on the top is a team of teachers, and we very strategically made sure that teachers had an opportunity to work across general education, special education, dual language, and our ENL teachers as well, working together and really sharing best practices. So part of our data literacy work is making sure that there was time carved out during our PLC time to really support our teachers articulating what is working for our students and having deliberate time to evaluate student work and make sure that we're pushing each other's practice. So I'm really proud of our teachers, particularly because of the way that they were able to support each other and make sure every single student was being challenged. Often when we talk about data, we talk about math and we talk about literacy, but we sometimes fail to look at writing as an area where we can analyze data. And one of our powerful moves this year as with our PLCs was actually using our writing rubrics and analyzing student writing samples. We've done that several times during our PLC time, as you can see in the photo on top, where teachers were able to analyze student writing and then group them based on strengths and needs, and then discuss together with each other how to support writing development. That's an area that's particularly important when we're talking about writing development for our students that are both classified as students with IEPs as well as multilingual learners, an area of focus in our work at Roosevelt this year. So you can see that coming alive. We also wanted to make sure that our students themselves could be a part of data literacy. So even just as early as yesterday, I was looking through our school pays data, and I noticed that there were two students that stood out because they've made over two years of growth in just one year. And so I pulled them in, and we did a little debrief together, a fishbowl, and interviewed them and talked to them. What do you attribute your success to? How did your teachers help you? What did your family do to help you with your literacy at home? And having our students also have the opportunity to reflect on their power goals, how they have grown over the year and over their elementary career into these powerful, strong, confident readers and writers is also really important when we're talking about data literacy and goal-setting with students themselves so that they can bring in that metacognition and reflection, and they even were able to articulate and give advice to other readers about how they were able to make so much growth. In the picture on the bottom, you also see a student in a self-contained class presenting his writing to his class, an area that he has grown so much in, and then eliciting feedback from other students. And so we've really tried at Roosevelt to think about data literacy more broadly than simply test scores and also make sure that we're using protocols such as using writing rubrics to analyze and group our students based on their needs and their strengths to drive instruction and drive writing growth as well as math, writing, and science. So that is just a taste of Roosevelt and helping make sure students own their learning and teachers as well, so, as well, are owning their own practice and helping support each other.
All right. We're going to move right into small group instruction. Small groups are an effective, are a highly effective instructional method that allows you to target your instruction to meet the needs of each student in your classroom. At Park School, with the support of Maria Meyer, we've been able to adopt a new resource for our pre-kindergarten students. It's called Benchmark Ready to Advance. And one of the things that I'm most proud of is really having had the entire pre-K team, including teachers from the Osning Children's Center, be part of regular series of PDs and planning sessions. We actually formed a committee, a planning committee, that comes together every single week at 7:45 in the morning to review this resource and to plan for the grade. This has really allowed us to really leverage the work of small groups. And what does that look like in pre-K? Well, some examples of that will include teachers working with students on teaching them how to use and hold books. Book handling skills are not things that we should take for granted, and pre-K is a targeted skill that we teach. Students are learning about how print moves through the page, that it goes from left to right. They're being asked questions about characters, about illustrations in a book, and this is what small group instruction looks like in pre-K. The teachers themselves have really created a pacing calendar, and the outcome has been wonderful because when you walk into all of our pre-K classrooms, you see alignment, you see students really celebrating and learning around the same things, each different class in their own style, the way it should be, but students, at the end of the day, I feel very satisfied because I know that our pre-K students are receiving a common curriculum. One of the things that I'm also very proud of this year, and thanks to you, the Board, and to our central admin, we've been able to pilot academic intervention services in Spanish. So we have a Spanish AIS teacher who supports 25 students, and in her small group instruction, she is targeting students' early reading literacy skills in their native language, something that my colleague Frazin talked about, is really the power of leveraging their home language, and we have seen so much success. Every single one of her students have moved levels. Out of the 25, 17 of them have need to discontinue because they've already met grade level proficiency. In kindergarten, right now, our Aneal level is 74%, which is something that we should all celebrate, and it's really not just the power and the support that this bilingual AIS teacher has provided, but it's really paying a close focus on the dual language component of the ARC program as well. And our small group instruction really highlights that. Our teachers really devote small group instruction in both languages, and we try to really balance that work in both pre-K and kindergarten. Next year, since we have so much data in pre-K, one of the things that we want to be able to do, hence the delta up there, is really start looking and unpacking that pre-K data to really support early Tier One in kindergarten in September.
Thank you. So at Brookside School, some areas that we would like to highlight are our Math Professional Learning Communities. So similar to Park School, we have support from the American Reading Company that provides professional development to our teachers in ELA, but we really didn't have that carved out time for teachers to come together and speak about math and analyze data and make action plans. So this year, with the support of Krista Madya and the math teacher leaders that we have at our school, we've carved out time, similar to Claremont, where our students are in assemblies with the social workers, reviewing PBIS. with the social workers, reviewing PBIS expectations, and the teachers meet in teams. That learning is co-facilitated by myself and the math teacher leaders, who I meet with before the meeting to review the agenda and provide support as needed. So during this PLC time, we were able to analyze some of the state data from our students when they move on to Claremont, and similar to Claremont's focus, we identified a need in the OA standard, I mean, operations and algebraic thinking. And using the help of the Achieve the Core Coherence map, we backwards mapped it to see what standards in grades one and two really funnel into that standard in grade three, and thinking about the work that we're currently doing at Brookside and how we could help strengthen our students before they go to Claremont. Through these PLCs and really pulling apart what the OA strand is, we identified that we don't necessarily explicitly teach how to solve word problems in math, right? So through the PLCs, it kind of organically came about from the teachers to identify a time during the week where we could do a deep dive and really think about how we can show our mathematical thinking on paper. We call this Three Reads Thursday with the Three Reads protocol. The first time we read it, we're just reading it for context, which supports our multilingual learners. The second time, we're paying attention to quantities and what they represent in the word problem, and the third read, we're thinking about the question and what questions we can solve based on the information provided to us. And students are really pushed to show their mathematical thinking. As a result of this, we were able to bring back student work to analyze at the PLCs and develop small group plans that really target the needs that are evident in the student work, once again using Achieve the Core to think about what standards, even in third grade, that our students might be ready for, to be previewed in second grade, or what prerequisite skills do we need to address in order for them to access the learning in their current grade. Based on in-house baseline and end-line data that we collected, we saw an increase of 10% in the OA strand for our second-grade students, which we're really excited about. When thinking about a Delta, we want to think about additional ways to provide support for teachers to really develop strategic lesson plans for small groups, and we also want to refine our focus and thinking about the Plan Do Act cycle of inquiry and refining it so that we could move through it a couple of times within a school year.
So I mentioned earlier about our intentional data efforts, and that in reviewing data, we were able to build this really complex learning story about each child. Again, understanding where their strengths are so we could use those strengths to build areas of growth. So what this did for us is it resulted in the teachers creating action plans to support this small group instruction over multiple content areas, and so we were able to enrich and extend for the students who were ready for that type of instruction, as well as explicitly teach to the foundational skills and fill in gaps for students that needed this. Our coach, Melissa, our coach, modeled how to identify the high-leverage power goals for literacy, and she modeled for us how to instruct these high-leverage power goals in a small group with really strong teaching moves. This really benefited us because we were then able to go back in the classroom and practice this ourselves. In the area of mathematics, Dr. Velez mentioned that they also were focusing on one of the domains of operations and algebraic thinking, and as I mentioned earlier, problem solving was something that we worked to embed a little bit more into our math program. However, we realized that the prerequisite skill to problem solving is understanding learning facts with automaticity, knowing them like that. And so because this is something that we noticed students are still struggling with, what we did this year is we practiced using just the facts, which is a component of the first-in-math application, and we started to see some magic happening, so much magic that over the course of the last few months, teachers have been sending me screenshots through emails with their excitement as to how much this math fact proficiency is improving so we can use these facts now to solve these real-world problems that we want students to solve. So our success, and this is really due to the teachers' hard work and commitment, has been using this data to best inform all of our practices and make really the most informed decisions about individual student achievement. So moving forward in the area of small group instruction, we recognize that some of our learners receive small group instruction throughout the course of a day from multiple instructors. So for example, a third-grade student might receive small group through a foundations lesson, and then in the same day, have a toolkit lesson, and then in the same day, may go to an AIS teacher for small group or an ENL teacher for small group. So through our MTSS team, we will continue to look at alignment of instruction within these small groups. We will look at practices and goal-setting to ensure that students receive exactly what they need to do over a course of a school day.
Very much in continuity with what my colleagues have shared, one of the most important parts, which is both a highlight and a next step for us, is the articulation between all of the adults, and that includes instructional pedagogues, but also our clinicians in being able to really dramatically move students and have heterogeneous groups that change throughout the year, making sure that students are never stuck in the same small group throughout the year or the same small group that needs support in a certain content area. We want to make sure that the students themselves are a part of movement and that they see that, like we're noticing, many of our students may have started with a Tier Two or Tier Three support and have exited out of that due to the small group targeted support in collaboration with our clinical team support, with equity team support, and really making sure that we're articulating about students' needs and what some of the obstacles are that might be holding them back from reaching their highest levels academically in certain content areas. And so that's both a strength that we are very proud of. Our MTSS Tier One meetings, we did three rounds of them this year, and those meetings proved to be a wonderful opportunity to really look at students' needs and then come up with action plans for them when back in the classroom with our Tier One instruction. Our hope and where we are moving toward is that we have more of that articulation, so that if I'm the classroom teacher and my student is being serviced or pulled out for certain AIS services, that we want to make sure that when the student is learning in that small group with their Tier Two or Tier Three support, that they are taking that learning back with them to the classroom and applying it to Tier One. That can be very challenging sometimes because our students are really working to fill foundational gaps that they might have, but we're noticing that the more their confidence is built when they're getting that small group instructional support, the more individualized attention, their confidence grows, and then when they're in Tier One, they are able to be more successful. And we're seeing that in all of the different content areas, particularly with math and literacy, and our goal is to make sure that there's creative space carved out in our daily schedules so that there can be that articulation between classroom teachers, clinicians, AIS, ENL, and so on. And so we're looking to create those opportunities and also work together with the other schools that have figured out ways to build in that collaboration and articulation time in creative manners with their scheduling.
We're up to equity. And the quote for equity reads, "It is our job as educators to not just teach skills, but also to teach students to know, validate, and celebrate who they are." And who they are starts with being able to say who they are when they get to Park School. As pre-K and kindergarten students, building a sense of belonging will always be a focus of ours, right? Especially with our newest students, creating a wonderful experience for school, we have that responsibility of making sure that students feel affirmed, feel like they belong, and are seen by every single adult in our building. And so this year, one of the things that we did through the help of the Austin Matters Foundation is really create a Story Walk. In addition to that, our teachers, through our PBIS work, really developed a series of positive behavior intervention strategies, lessons, and the picture behind me of Parky Pig, if you don't know who Parky Pig is, just ask a Park School student, he is a big hero at Park School, and the students have learned about the importance of being safe, about the importance of kindness, and about the importance of being polite and kind through the lessons that Parky Pig has taught them. We do celebrate our Story Walk. Actually, we have just launched a new book in our Story Walk hallway. We have really felt that this has really created a sense of whole-school community. Park School has always had beautiful community, but the Story Walk has really given every single student, every single staff member, some of what I would call a central focus. So the messages from the books that we share with the children are messages that we try to highlight in our classrooms, in our morning messages, and so students understand and hear what it means to be kind and what it means to be safe. One of the things that I would like to share is really just looking at our data. Our Panorama data this spring has been very, very satisfactory. Our students, our teachers are probably on the 70% in every single domain within the Panorama, a sense of belonging, our school climate, our well-being. The one area of growth for us is the cultural awareness, and one of the things that we want to bring back and really be very strategic about next year is really planning our racial literacy lessons and our Equity PDs, not lessons, I meant to say PDs, professional development opportunities, not just with our teaching staff, but being inclusive of every single staff member, our teaching assistants, our custodians, our secretaries, our kitchen staff. So all of these folks that make up our school community will now be part of this growing learning around race and cultural awareness. One of the things that the teachers have asked is also for more understanding on the backgrounds, the languages, the cultures of the students that come through our doors. Most recently, we've had students from India, students from Latin America, who speak not just Spanish but other dialects, and so just having a sense of understanding before students arrive is also going to support that student's sense of belonging and welcoming when they get to Park School.
So an area of celebration for Brookside is for our teachers who participated in the Second Step curriculum for adults. So as a reminder, we use Second Step in the classrooms as our socio-emotional learning curriculum, and there's an adult component whose focus is to create a positive school climate. This is part of teachers' professional learning responsibilities, and teachers can select to be part of it, or we have some other offerings as well. The staff that participated had a positive experience and reported forming deeper connection with the other colleagues. However, because this was an elective, not all teachers participated in this Second Step curriculum, which leads us to our Delta. In comparison to last year, staff's sense of belonging actually decreased by 13% of people that are answering favorably on how they feel they belong at Brookside School. So administration is thinking about how we can broaden the impact of the Second Step curriculum and perhaps offer it or find ways to offer it to all of our staff members so that we can try to make sure that our teachers and staff are participating, receiving this professional development, and building that sense of belonging.
So our first two categories really spoke to the importance of data and instructional practices, but equally as important, if not more, is the joy that we bring into our learning environment. At Claremont, it's the student leaders that really are the driving force and the joy that we feel. We have our Student Spirit Committee who meets monthly, and they come up with the most fun activities for our children, from Anything But a Backpack Day to Opposite Day, which was a day that teachers became students and the students became teachers. We have our usual pajama days, and this year, if you were just curious, Bring a Stuffy to School has been the most popular day, so they have to happen about monthly. Our Equity Team is continuing to work with One World Organization for their Agents of Change program. This year, their focus being sustainability and how their impact in the school will then impact our greater community around us. Our MBK and Girls Inc. leaders continue with empowerment and identity, and this year, we have a lot of garden leaders that actually willingly give up their recess time to grow seeds, and when those seeds become plants, they put them in the garden, and they cultivate and care for them, and then they will harvest them, and as you are aware, all the produce that we grow at Claremont School then goes to feed the food bank here in Austin, and so we support the greater community. Moving forward, we know not all children at Claremont choose to participate in student leadership, but their voices are equally as important to us. So what we are planning to do next year is to have our student leaders create surveys that their peers can take, and the reason for these surveys is to ensure that all students have a voice and that all students have a tremendous sense of belonging in their school.
It's a perfect metaphor that our students might start off as little seeds, grow into seedlings, and then full-on plants. Our theme, Ru's Girls Leaders, is very, very fitting in terms of our focus around equity, of kids having a voice and having power, and it's not that we have to give it to them, it's that it's already there, and it's up to us to help unearth their brilliance, their joy, their creativity, their power. I'm just coming from our orientation where we talked with families who shared their excitement that there's such a nice continuity between Claremont, where we're developing their leadership, and then coming to Roosevelt where they actually get to invent their own proposals for clubs, and they take over, they have totally taken over Ru's News, they made the yearbook. There's so many opportunities for leadership, but also brave leadership, because we are addressing the need for healing. We're addressing the need for cultural understanding and cultural competence amongst our students, and so even just this morning, I had to leave my office so that eight students could come in, and they led their own restorative circle, and they even used a talking stick themselves. They see us as adults modeling it, and now they are doing it, and they are coming up with the solutions themselves, and it's not just always about us solving the problems for them or telling them how to think, how to act, it's that grappling, the same thing that we see in a math lesson. We see it in terms of their social needs and their growth as students. We see that they are teaching the kids at Park and at First Steps about mud agrees and about ending animal homelessness. We see our student equity leaders even as early as today, recording videos for Juneteenth and talking about what it means to be an inclusive community. And so this is definitely an area of pride where we see that it's not just starting with the adults, but the kids themselves are now following our lead in terms of restorative practices and peer conflict resolution. We see it in the classrooms every single day, and it is absolutely going to be a key lever to help them be prepared for middle school and high school. And I even heard that from parents today at the orientation, how excited they are that our students are using restorative practices to heal, to grow, to lead. And an area for growth is that our teachers have requested more training on this, because yes, we are dipping into it, we are doing restorative practices, absolutely, but we want to learn more, we want to make sure that we're partnering with clinicians, because sometimes restorative practices can also open up trauma and wounds and the need for healing that even can go back generations. And so it's important that we empower our teachers, and we're working with BOCs. And so it's important that we empower our teachers, and we're working with BOCs to do team building for our teachers now, similar to what we've done with our students, and make sure that in our training, every teacher will be able to walk away with a new toolkit for how to build community, sense of belonging, and really be a part of the restorative work as we're strengthening our classroom culture moving into the coming year.
Okay, we're up to our last pillar, but not our least. My advice is that we see our families and community members as co-creators and co-producers of the excellent schools and learning opportunities that we want for all of our students. The work that our family engagement specialist does at Park School, I could spend the whole night talking about, but one of the most high-leveraging moves that she has been able to really support us with is really cutting down on the absenteeism. Believe it or not, our students in pre-K and kindergarten are absent, and it's our responsibility to really help support families and to say, you know what, coming to school is a necessity. Your child is entitled to be here, and they need to be here. We work hard at Park School to really make sure and mitigate this issue and make sure that parents understand the value of being in school, sitting in the seat all day, every single day. And when it does happen, our family engagement specialist has been there to really support in a very supportive way and also to offer herself as a resource. So it's not so much about telling the parent, your child has been out X number of times. The conversation is really, help me understand how I can support you so that your child is here tomorrow on time. And those conversations really are open and very genuine and very candid. And because of that, our chronic absenteeism has been reduced significantly this year. We have gone from 7% in pre-K in the fall to now 3% this spring, and in kindergarten, 3% to now only 1%. And that is because our parents are understanding the message that if you're going to be out, believe it or not, you're going to get a phone call. So they are starting to realize that this is important, and so we will continue to make this a goal of ours. The school-wide events at Park School have always been one of my favorite days. One of the things that we have tried this year in partnership with the Westchester Jewish Community Services is really bring them on board to support the social-emotional learning that's happening in the classrooms. So we have extra social workers who have come in to Park School to support our teachers, to support individual students, and in addition to that, they have offered family workshops and have met with parents and offered cafes to really talk about, for example, the importance of routines, the importance about parenting, supporting them with SCL strategies at home, and again, is through an open dialogue and conversation. One of the things that we have to continue to grow and work on next year is really helping parents. We want to hear their voice, we want to hear their feedback. We want more of their feedback in the Panorama data. And so I've been working with Dr. Lopez and with our admin team at Park School to really think of creative ways to have parents not just complete the survey at home, but really offer opportunities when they're in the building to complete the survey. So like, for example, for Family Day, we're so happy you're here, you're one of our parents, can you also fill out this survey before you go home? So it's one of the things that we're thinking about.
So at Brookside, one of the things that we wanted to celebrate was our partnership with the United Way After School Program. In the spring, we were able to provide targeted reading intervention through the support of one of our teachers, which lasted about seven sessions, which contributed to an average of about three and a half months of reading growth over those seven sessions, as evidenced by Schoolpace data for the students that were included in that intervention. So it's definitely an area of celebrate and something that we want to think about continuing into next year. Additionally, although we did not have Andress services at Brookside this year, our amazing social workers, Ms. Levin and Ms. Negron-Sims, really went above and beyond in trying to find mental health services for our families in place of the services that they might have received from Andress in years prior. Next year, we would like to secure clinician from Andress so that our students can receive the mental health support that they need in-house, and we would also like to be able to provide more support for families who may need permanent housing.
So Claremont wants to thank all of our families for attending the reading celebrations, writing celebrations, math shares, craft events, holiday events, as well as being mystery readers this year and volunteering for the multiple things that happen in our building. We are also very proud of our partnerships. We are proud of our partnership with Pace University, Iona College, and the Family Resource Center of Yonkers, who have provided us all with extended-day tutoring opportunities for children. We partner with Bethany Arts, who supports us in our work with identity and features our identity projects at the Bethany Black History Month exhibition. We partner with Jacob Burns, who offers us See, Hear, Film. ENU Builds is who offers us our amazing master gardener so we can run the gardening program and thereby help support and feed the community. And finally, we have a very strong partnership with Manhattanville College, and this is called a PDS partnership, also known as a Professional Development School partnership, where Manhattanville College offers us a liaison who works with me to help support any kind of family or community event. This year, what we were able to do is we were able to build a team of teachers to join us in creating some events. In fact, there's one tomorrow night where we will partner with the Austining Public Library, and we will support groups of students with their moms and dads in how to continue building literacy throughout the summer, because we do know that if you don't continue to read over the summer, we see in September sometimes what we call the summer slide, where sometimes students forget some of what we've taught them in the spring. And so to support that, we're going to partner with the library. Students will be given some materials to work on over the summer, and if they have questions about it, our amazing Austining Public Library, Ignira, will help us with that. In addition, one of the things she's going to support with is encourage children to build background knowledge on the units of study that we know are going to happen in the coming year. So I've provided her with all of the units of study from kindergarten through grade five. So for example, if a rising fourth grader wants to go to the library this summer, and I really hope all of our students visit the public library this summer, because they have amazing incentives, but a librarian might say to that rising fourth grader, hey, here's a historical fiction book, knowing that they're going to be expected to read that in fourth grade, here's Sports and Society, or maybe a book on phobias, because that's Unit One. So we're hoping that that supports students with coming in with a little background knowledge by the time we're getting ready to teach some units of instruction. Moving forward, you know, going along with the quote that Emily shared, we want to include parents in this PDS process, because they truly will be the co-creators of what will build a school of excellence at Claremont.
Similarly, to what we talk about students, they are not empty receptacles. They come with so much background knowledge, so much experience, so much wealth. We view families in the same way, and our community partners as well. And even just tonight, I shared with families how we can learn from them. We are constantly learning from them. We invite them to even be a part of our professional learning, because every year, we have new students, we have new families, and we must work together and learn about the strengths and the needs of our students. And our families are our students' first teachers, and so this partnership is so crucial to the well-being and the growth of our students. As a new principal this year, one of my big pride points is that I knew that I had so much to learn from our families and community, and so I did a monthly dinner, and I had a cross-section of families, and we engaged in restorative practices ourselves. And when we talked about the quote by Karen Mapp, you know, she leads around family empowerment, not just family partnership or even family engagement, but the dual-capacity framework, where we are working together, where we are learning together and from each other. And so this year, I heard from parents and guardians of Roosevelt students what it feels like when your child is honored, when your identity is honored. You feel safe, you feel included. They shared, it's the ability to tell your own story. They shared their hopes, they shared their fears about the transition to middle school. They talked about how important it is when someone takes the time to understand you as a student and as a person. They talked about celebrations and differences and how we, as a diverse Austining community, can all learn from each other. And mostly, they talked about how Roosevelt and Austining schools honor their child's identity through deep, authentic listening, through embracing the student's ideas. They also, the parents shared with us about the high expectations that they want us to hold for their children and holding their kids accountable. Mistakes are learning opportunities. And so an area that I want to continue to make sure we have is those trusting, deep relationships, where our families know that we are listening to them, truly listening to their expertise and working together. And one fear that we keep hearing again and again, as indicated here in the Delta, is the area of online bullying and how so much can happen in a group chat or even in a Roblox game, and how to make sure that we are working together with our clinicians, with our families, with our community partners, with our educators, to provide additional support and empower our students to understand what it means to be safe in living in such a digital world. And kudos to you. A parent came up to me at the end of the orientation today after one of our slides was talking about our technology policies and how distracting and harmful to mental health they can be, and the parent was very excited about the book study that you're doing and really analyzing. Yes, but the buzz is there. You know, we see that our families are invested in partnering with us to combat hate speech and discrimination and hateful bullying and even body image that might negatively be impacting our students and be a distraction to learning. So I'm grateful that we're in this together and that we'll continue to partner to combat and prevent any form of online bullying. And with that, we would love to open it up.
That's the end of our presentation.
So I will say, hopefully, our board and our community members are seeing a continuity of conversation across, I mean, even our weekly meetings that we have, we hear it. There is synergy and understanding and sharing between and amongst the schools, which is critical to the work we're doing, and data from one school informs for the other. Very important.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for that presentation. I really enjoyed it. I enjoyed hearing from you all and seeing you all. I'm going to turn things over first to my fellow trustees for any questions or comments that they may have. Anyone? Rob? Go ahead.
Just a quick clarifying one. The quantitative data that you pulled for across this, ERLA, NWEA, et cetera, et cetera, can you just clarify where the numbers for all this came from, what sources?
So when we're talking about reading levels, we at Austining, we use American Reading Company and we use Schoolpace, which is just like the housing for the reading levels across schools, right? Which is great. When we're thinking about students moving from one building to a whole nother building, historical data is archived there. So us at Brookside School can see how often a teacher at Park School conferred with a specific student, and it's specifically what happened on those dates. So when we're talking about movement in reading levels or increasing proficiency or decreasing emergency levels for reading, we're speaking specifically about ERLA and ANEEL data. ANEEL for the Spanish part.
In addition, first of all, what's really nice about the Schoolpace data is we have access to each other's buildings. So I peek a lot at what's happening to the incoming group that's coming to me, the outgrowing group that now I've sent to Roosevelt, just to continue to see where progress is taking place. We do look at the NWEA benchmarks, but you have to understand, they only happen three times a year, whereas Schoolpace is ongoing, right? It's on a daily, daily basis that you could see that data shifting and moving. In terms of academic intervention, we do have weekly progress monitoring also through NWEA, using the MAP fluency, so we're able to see that data as well. I'm a state test building, so is Katie, so we, at the beginning of the year, did a lot of work in looking at the different domains of the state test. So for math, we were able to see separately each of the domains. So if I looked at number and operations in the state test, I was able to go back to NWEA and then look at NWEA for the exact same domain. So we could start to see where we have areas of proficiency and where we still need to fill some gaps. And then, of course, you know, there's the daily data that we see from conferring, from every exit ticket that we give, from end-of-unit assessments, from our own benchmarks, from writing samples, from student work, rubrics every single day. There's so many different ways that we can build this picture of an individual child.
I would also add that we analyze attendance data, we analyze behavioral data, we analyze the DESAD screener data, which is done as a way to, it's a strengths-based look at our students' strengths in terms of their social and emotional learning competencies, and we do look at that, and we look at the needs of our students, working together with our classroom teachers, our clinicians, our MTSS protocols. And so we have such a plethora of data at our fingertips. Like, I'm looking at my branching minds dashboard right now, I can look at any individual student, and I can see the interventions they're getting, I can see their social-emotional learning data, I can look quickly at math, history, and even in Infinite Campus, you know, we look at flags, we look at all the different interventions from, you know, pre-K on that a student has gotten, their history, their state tests, multilingual learners looking at their NICE SLAT assessment, their strengths, areas where maybe we can see that a student might have plateaued in speaking, listening, reading, or writing, and we use that to really drive our instruction together with teachers. And I'm very, very proud of our teachers for their ability to navigate all of these different data systems to get together, work on meeting the needs of our students and ensuring that each of them is growing, no matter what level they started at.
I mean, yes, everything that my colleagues have shared, I think your question is really about the focus, because looking at so much data sets can be overwhelming, but understanding what it is and why we're looking at the data. So when we're focusing, for example, I was talking about our focus in mathematics, so we look specifically at our NWEA math data, but also our formative assessments, our math benchmarks, and we looked at certain data sets to inform the upcoming units that were coming up in the curriculum. So it wasn't looking at every single standard, right? It was looking at what was going to be taught in the next couple of weeks to really inform our teaching and guiding lesson planning.
So for regards to math, then, to find out if a student is proficient or emergency, I understand the ARC and the ERLA, that's clear based on the way that program is set up. But so then, when you say formative assessment, is that like a classroom test, like how you would determine if a student's proficient or an emergency specifically then for math?
Yeah, we have rubrics that we use when we score, and in our case, and I think it's a little different in the other buildings, but we have the same test that students are taking over time. And so when they move from one domain, if they pass that domain, they move on to another question. Or if students are still working, like I mentioned, cardinality, right? So if a student is able to count from one to 20 in the fall, but now we're assessing in the spring, so now we're going to start from 20 and above, right, to see how much more students can do. more students can do. So in this case, we are looking at student growth, right? We're looking at what they were able to do in the beginning and then comparing it to what they're able to do now.
And last one then for me, the Schoolpace, is that just for ARC or are you able to put in other things in there as well as just the ARC?
That's just ARC.
Okay, thank you.
Go for it. First, I want to say thank you. This is very thorough. And I just wanted to highlight something that I heard consistently throughout and just the idea, like Mary highlighted, that we have this like kind of vertical alignment where you guys are sharing information in a way that makes the process for our students seamless. You know, Ms. Mania was able to know exactly what our Claremont students are experiencing when she introduces them to fifth grade and can pull on that. You know, I just saw that, you know, because I have one going up. And so when I see this on the board, I see it as a parent too. So those things are coming to life. The other thing I wanted to mention that I liked is how much we're focusing on PLCs. Talking about my own experience as a teacher, I have found that professional development to be very useful. It highlights the expertise that we already have. We have such a plethora of talented teachers who can, you know, share so much and know the student population and are working on the same curriculum. And of course, we need, you know, instructional coaches, especially for trying to implement a new curriculum, but we already do have a wealth of knowledge. So I have found personally that advice from colleagues is such an efficient, cheap, easy community-building way to do that.
PLCs, you'll define that for us.
Professional learning communities.
Thank you.
They're basically clubs of teachers who meet professionally to discuss, as they explained, you know, maybe it's, oh, who's, I'm having trouble, you know, I've got students stagnating on this topic. Does anybody else? How are you doing it? Is this a strength of yours? And so people can share their strengths, things that are working, or bring their problems up and get advice from their colleagues in a really nonjudgmental way, hopefully, if you've made the right matches there as far as colleagues go. So I love to see that and I like that we're highlighting that. My question, and I'm not even sure if this is for you all at the table or maybe it's for Ms. Meyer, I'm not sure. I feel like in the past, we've received panorama data as board members, maybe in an update. It wasn't necessarily part of a board presentation. So I'm hearing references to panorama data in the presentation. So I don't want to give a directive because I'm just one person, but I think in the past we have received that. So I'm just hopeful that we may, once, I'm sure we haven't collected the student panorama stuff, so it might.
So we actually have.
Okay.
So I will make sure that it's in.
Like an update or something?
It's next week.
Okay.
It will be in.
I'm just excited to see it as all.
It will be in next week's board event update.
Great.
I'll make sure it's added.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Trustee Banta?
So I just want to thank all of you, not just for the presentation, but for the work you're doing. You gave a very robust insight into how you are really trying to take a holistic approach to the Longage Plan, the Portrait of the Learner, and then also just guiding that through the vision and just the core values and all of that, how you started out your presentation. It's evident that you all are really diving deep into this work and really trying to pull together all the facets of that and with true integrity. And I know that's not an easy feat, so I need to make sure that I commend you all for that, because being able to implement all the concepts that we had to kind of developed as a district into the learning process, especially of our most youngest learners, is very crucial. So I can't thank you enough, because I can only imagine the work that goes into that, especially making it such a well-rounded integration of the use of data to inform your process as opposed to driving it. If, you know, I think we all know what we mean by that in terms of students being, it's clear you see each student as an individual, right? And that's not easy to do once you start using data to kind of help you along with the process. So you all have, it's amazing, right, to see how far the work has come and to just see where we are at the end of the year and to see that you really are infusing a lot of the concepts of SEL into your work, using a lot of that information that's being provided. I really, you know, I don't want, I really don't have much to say other than I'm just highly, highly impressed with just how deeply, deeply you all are implementing this process. So I just commend you all for that and I'm excited to see where you go from here with what you've learned, you know, because I know as great as this all is, there's always something you kind of learn along the way. And I just know that doing this work as far as like around the data and things like that, I'm just wondering, I guess my only question would be, is there anything else that you would need or like or would enhance this anymore, if that's even possible, as far as the work you're already doing around? It even looks like you're using branching minds like to its full capacity, right? Like the vision we had for that as far as being able to coalesce all these different data points together and see the whole child, right? So I'm just really impressed by that. And I just, you know, I really just want to shed a tear right now, actually, because it's just like, I can't, like, it was, I can tell this was not just a presentation hitting all the points, that this is actually living in each of you all's buildings. And that's not a small feat to get to. So just thank you very much for the efforts that have gone into that and including families. These are all, like, all questions I've had throughout this year and last year, like, it's just, it was all there, right? And I just commend you for that. Thank you very much.
Annie, Ms. Gomez, trustee Gomez.
Everyone's already thanked you, so I won't go on too much, but I really loved your presentation. And as a parent, it just gives me so much comfort that you all talk to each other and know our kids. One of the downsides, I hear a lot of the Princeton plan from other communities who are maybe considering it or not considering it, is that there's like a disruption in the continuity of education and it doesn't seem like that's something that's happening here. It makes me really happy to see. I have two questions. One is, I was having a conversation with a parent who's an incoming kindergartner and they were not interested in the dual language program because they had seen that as the kids get older, the scores start to drop off, like across the board, the academics are lower. So I'm curious what supports are in place for that, because, I don't know, I was just like kind of shocked that they're not even in the district yet and they're like against this for their child because of that.
I mean, I think your question is a bigger question, Annie, but I can say that when parents, and look, you know commitment to bilingualism. And by that I mean the cultural competencies that go along with that, the support of embracing a new language, but not just the language, the culture. And I can't speak for my colleagues, but I know that at Park School, learning is fun. Learning is, students are engaged. So whether they're learning in English or in Spanish, they're feeling happy and joyful. The experiences are meaningful. And I think that by the time they get to the upper grades, if that second language is not embraced holistically in other ways, more than just the reading and the writing of it, I can see how students can lose interest, right? But I do think that it's a bigger conversation maybe to have with Ms. De La Cruz Arroyo as well. I don't know if my colleagues want to take a stab at that.
No, I think you said it beautifully.
I'd like to add though, too, that sometimes, I'm not sure what data the parent was looking at, if they were looking at the New York State testing data, which is.
They just said they had like heard it.
Oh, right. So the public data, which is quite huge, if you go up to the state website, it's literally two years behind. And it also does not reflect, it reflects culturally what many districts, including ones I worked at, about people opting out of the tests and misalignment in terms of instruction, in terms of what was taking place, what was assessed and what was taught timing-wise. But also, it doesn't reflect the work of ARC. You're just completing the second year in ARC. ARC was selected because it does support our bilingual students. So again, I'd be curious as to know what data, that is the big data set that's out there and it's available on the New York State website, so.
But if it helps at all, you can have that parent call me.
Right.
And I can connect that parent with a parent of a student to help explain a little bit about, you know, what the expectations are around that.
Just for the record, we are having a great experience in dual language in pre-K. So I was a little surprised they were so against it and I just didn't have an answer. So I was wondering if there are any supports along the way, if kids are starting to fall behind.
I do want to say, anecdotally, I've heard the complete opposite. So there's a data mismatch here somewhere. I don't know where, but I'm just, as long as we're talking in anecdotes, I've heard the exact opposite, that the test scores over time, maybe initially they're a little bit slower, but then by the time you get into like fourth, fifth, sixth grade, they're actually higher. So I don't know, again, I don't have the hard data, but that's, that's what, when we were considering the program, that's what our interviews with the staff, that's what we were told, so.
Can I just, I'll add to that. So I think there's definitely, I agree with what President Crossling said. There is a, I think one of the things that we probably may want to take a look at, I mean, to the level of where there's like English and sentence structure and vocabulary and learning all different tenses in Spanish as you learn in English, I think that's something we can probably talk about, because I know that, you know, in some cases, the kids learn just through the fact of speaking. It's the immersion is just what's amazing, really, right? Because you're learning not just the culture, you're learning how it's spoken, how you interact, how you engage, all of the things that kind of create that level of interaction, which is, I think, amazing. The thing to add to that, and it's not a conversation, I think, for this particular group, I think it's a conversation for Ms. De La Cruz Arroyo, but it's just a matter of, you know, how do we continue to fortify and strengthen what can be elevated even more? Everything can be elevated, right? And that's what you guys are here for, because you guys are talking about an elevation plan, right? So that's something, just to add to that, that I think, I don't know that it actually hurts any of the kids. I think if anything, it builds a lot more cultural and ways to connect that I think just in a lot of places is missing, that we happen to have that kind of advantage. So, I mean, I think what you guys have been doing, it's great stuff. I have a question just about writing, if I can. I love the fact that you're going down the road of writing. I love what you pointed out about the writing aspect of it. Can you talk a little bit more about the style of writing? Is it more creative writing? Is it structured writing? Is it, are there various types of writing that allow for not just kind of like, you know, one style or the other? I'm just curious as to what you're think, what kind of plan that is, because it sounds great in terms of, that would have been a question had it not been brought up that you presented, what about the writing? And you brought it up, which is great.
I'm glad to hear that, because I think especially when we're talking about college and career-ready, life-ready, this is such an important skill for all of our students to be able to embrace and be confident as writers. I think a big part of that is that we're using both ARC, which exposes our students, even when I visited Park School, I was blown away to see that the students were doing interactive writing in their morning meetings and that they were actually writing their own stories in a kindergarten classroom. And I've seen the trajectory all the way through all the grades and all the units of study where students are moving from being able to write creatively and express their own ideas and opinions, but then through the grades, they also start incorporating writing about text and the ability to analyze.
That's crazy.
Text in writing. And when I look at the writing and I see the difference between the beginning of the year and the end of the year with my fifth graders, I see that they are not just quoting, they're not just doing this, you know, what you cut and paste, here's evidence from the text. They're analyzing it, they're explaining it, they're justifying why they use that text-based evidence to support their response, they're writing about theme, they're doing research, they're writing arguments. Even right now, I walk into a classroom last week and one of our amazing literacy teachers was having their students debate about topics related to outer space, which is the unit that we're studying. And the students were debating each other while looking down at their writing and their research. That's powerful. That's what I expect to see in an AP high school classroom and I see it in fifth grade. I'm also seeing the same thing even with our newcomer students that might not yet be doing it in English, but they are doing it in Spanish. They are researching, they are writing arguments, they are justifying how that text supports their opinion and their argumentative writing, which is preparing them, like I said, from middle school, high school, and even beyond. So that's the writing development that you see and the exposure to writing many different genres throughout the grades, particularly K through five. I can't speak much to the middle school and high school, but I know that they are working up toward being able to be ready for that high school expectation and college expectation.
Yeah, I just wanted to add something. I think the noticeable thing about this program is that there is a continuum of writing. So for example, every grade will have a narrative feature, which is creative. So for example, third graders might read Magic Treehouse books, but then they get to create their own version of a Magic Treehouse. Then every grade has informational unit where students from a very young age will learn how to research, so they're given research questions. And if you look at those questions, they're built upon from year to year. So if you notice their graphic organizers, I noticed that they're almost similar to identical from the time that they started at Park School through us, even as I visited the middle school here and I got to see them reading Hunger Games and I was looking at their graphic organizers and I said, wow, this is exactly what Claremont students are being asked to do, but the levels of text complexity obviously increase. And then, of course, there's like nuances. So whereas fourth grade studies historical fiction, third grade might study traditional tales. So there's like this realistic fictions or sometimes genres are changed, but animal studies take place in every grade, but the nuances are different. So whereas third graders learn marine animals, fourth graders will learn adaptations of animals. So again, that research feature is there as well. So I think what's different about this program than programs I've used in the past is there's a combination of creative, but there definitely is this explicit instruction on how to respond to text, which is really what some of these upper-level assessments ask us to do with evidence, so prove it, right? How do you know that that's what the author is trying to say? How do you know that's what the theme or the main idea is? Find it. And so it really helps to build that vocabulary, using context clues, that text complexity, it's all in there in this program. What we have to do, though, as teachers, is we have to plan and prepare how to teach these skills to our students, to make sure there is going to be that continued alignment.
I think you've probably answered 30 questions that I probably could have answered, asked for, so that's really great. And then I'll ask just one last thing around this. How, what might this look like amplified? I mean, it seems like you guys have done a lot of piloting. I just want to say also, I really love this interconnectivity. It's like a theme that echoed from last meeting between AMD and OHS and I just love the way you guys kind of make this flow all the way through us. That's great. But I want to just understand the amplification across the larger student body, how does that look? What do you guys think in terms of how that might be, create a different outcome based upon all the things you guys are doing here?
I mean, one of the things that's nice in our year two, I don't know if you all noticed this too, I'm sure you did, maybe not you so much, Emily, because they're coming to you. But because our students had experienced this type of instruction last year, as we started this year, at the beginning of this year, we were so happily surprised that the routines of the program or reading and writing were there, the structures of writing, the graphic organizers were not new to students, the type of experiences we were given, it was familiar to students. So the work felt different in this second year and I'm hoping that next year it even feels even more different as students come in with more background and more experiences. But I think that's where the amplification will take place, is as those kindergartners work their way up to grade five, I think that's where we're going to really be able to see a noticeable difference.
That's great. And then if you guys, the next time that we hear from you guys again about all this progress that you guys have been making and the things you've been putting in place, is it possible for you guys to come back and show us kind of like a from-to? Here's where we started from and here's kind of where we went to and just to highlight all that progress, you think you can probably capture that? I think that'd be great to see, just like, we came from this, this is where we ended up, based upon all the things that's been done.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, I think a nice way to really share.
Like what we've done, that, that's what they did this year, and that's the goal of the fall, when you get the full picture of data. You did hear some snippets of areas of like challenge and, that you heard tonight that came out of this. And, and I think that when you start, first of all, to give you a big, big, big balcony picture, I use that phrase a lot, the Board of Education created this long-term plan. Melissa spoke beautifully about the thought that went into this plan, the four pillars and why. So you, you created a structure, your role is curriculum oversight. You created a structure to operationalize that. Our job is to put it in action and in place with regular updates to a board. So I have to give the board huge credit for the work that you did, because in many districts, that does not happen. There was a lot of thought, a lot of intentionality put behind this plan. It's, it's a beautiful document. In order to find a structure to operationalize it for the board, that, that was the thought. So the beginning of the year and the fall, they'll have all of the data. They've got a lot gathered now, outcomes as we head towards the end. But again, it's taking a look at, this is where we landed, this is where we still need to grow, this is an area where we're not so happy with, this is an area what we need to do. And the, it's part of the daily work of, I have to say, Maria, Jessica, and Kim. Regular work, actually, and there's fidelity of implementation. Many places adopt something, and it goes to the, they're all smiling, because that's, I guess. Many places adopt something, but you lose the fidelity over time. It's having people who specific professional responsibility and accountability it is towards something like this with a great deal of fidelity, and then being able to share it with you, because that's your role is oversight to see where we're going.
Fidelity is evident by the PLCs that they've created and everything else. So hats off to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. I was just going to suggest maybe a concrete way or example to share some of that alignment across the grades might be to share some work samples. So this is what it looks like in the beginning, this is what it looks like in the beginning of first grade, end of first grade, so forth. So we can definitely do that.
I was just going to comment on this idea, like Annie, you mentioned that with the Princeton Plan, too often it can feel like there's disruption, but not here. And I'm so grateful that you said that, kind of going with that theme of the interconnectivity, because there are so many examples, particularly this year, of the way the principals have PLC together. We have professional learning communities together. The assistant principals have that, teams of teachers have that, even just across schools. Like yesterday, I was in a meeting about literacy with AMD, and we were in PLC together, talking about our challenges and our strengths with implementation and feeding off of each other and questioning each other and pushing each other's thinking. And so, and tomorrow, our eighth graders are presenting writing to fifth graders tomorrow morning in every single one of our classrooms. And so there's this organic collaboration that I really have seen happening across our schools, more so this year, and it is wonderful, because it reminds us that they're all our students. And in this unique district's model with the Princeton Plan, all of our students are shared, and we are all invested equally in their success and their trajectory from pre-K through past high school.
I was just going to add to that as well. I think the Princeton Plan forces us to work collaboratively if we truly are dedicated to the success of our students, and we have to be willing to share our data, right? So Farzine can't feel any type of way, nor does she, right? If, if I, as Brookside, want to peek to see how our second graders are performing, right? Because what I do will directly impact the success of the students when they transfer over to Claremont. So I think that, that willingness to collaborate and be transparent with our data, like she says, she peeks around, and like, we want that, we don't want any surprises, because if you see a trend with students as they're coming up, like, please, point it out to us. Or if I peek at her data with the lens of first and second grade, and I see some way that we could fortify the students before they get to her, I think that's something that the principals have been doing very nicely this year.
I had another question.
Go for it.
So what I'm going to ask is, it's a Roosevelt question, how Roosevelt leaders are chosen. And what I'm really asking is, do some of the quieter kids get a chance to be leaders? Like, I'm just thinking about myself. Anybody I went to school with would be just like blown away that I'm sitting at this table.
So can I let you in on a little secret?
Some of our student leaders are the very same students that have the most behavior incidents. And they didn't sign up, there was some reverse psychology that went into it, and it has shifted the way that they see themselves. Because maybe they didn't necessarily see themselves as leaders yet, but it took us naming that for them and making sure that they saw a different version of themselves, that they too could be leaders. One of the things that we often do at Roosevelt, too, is make sure all of our clubs are very accessible. So that's making sure there's that after-school bus. Thanks to this district, we even have supper now for our after-school clubs. It's a game changer in accessibility for our students to be able to participate in clubs. We've also taken many different steps to make sure that it's accessible for all families and that there's no obstacles. So prior to, it might have been all digital signup. No, we just print out the Google form and talk the families through it online, and our office staff will help the families fill it out, and then they go home, they sign it. Just being really creative with that, helping our students even create their own clubs. Like, they literally created a club for crocheting and knitting where it was quiet. Like, the kids weren't talking, they were crocheting and knitting, even though their faculty advisors didn't know how to crochet or knit. The kids themselves wanted that, and they went and recruited a facilitator, you know? So I think being open to the creativity and the needs of the kids, the wants of the kids, like, just because a leadership might stereotypically be seen as this outgoing kid that's giving speeches. No, we've seen a really great uptick in terms of introvert, more introverted-style students being a part of different clubs, being a part of different activities. We've also made sure that our students who are in self-contained classes have the same opportunities and are a part of clubs and are a part of different leadership opportunities, including student council. Is it easy? No. Is it worth it? A hundred percent.
That's really great.
Annie, I just want to share something. I have a daughter that's a really, really, really quiet kid. So I seem to notice children at Claremont School that are similar to her. One thing I will say is sometimes what really supports us is that they can do this together with other children that they feel safe with, right? So you're not ever putting a quiet child on their own in a spotlight to showcase. I think the fact that Katie has multiple types of groups, we, we also do at Claremont, it encourages all, all types of children. Even our quiet children will come very often with a friend. They may not do the talking, the friend may do the talking for them, but they're there, they're with us, they're participating, and they're excited to be part of it.
That was really, the friend part really, because most introverts, no, most introverts have an emotional support extrovert as a friend or so. That's what I call them.
I am my husband's.
I'm an introvert as well, but usually we.
I'm an introvert.
Yeah. So that's really. But yeah, that's great. And I think you also pointed out something about with the data, that the, I don't know if it was the panorama, but students are kind of utilizing that in a way to kind of seek out those less kind of ambitious students who might not interact all the time, right? And so there's a lot of different pathways, it seems like. Like I said, I just want to shed a tear. It's all, you know, just really thinking really deeply about the work you're doing and the impact that you're having on, on the students. So thank you.
I told you that we'd be here at 9:15, but it was worth it, so thank you. But I do have to run, so I just want to ask a quick question, and then I'm going to turn things over to Vice President Mangi Melli. I wanted to ask a follow-up question about the restorative practices. You had mentioned that the, the students are engaging in this. I'm wondering what kinds of either clinicians or facilitators do we have working with them on that?
So that, we are doing our own ongoing training. We're really excited that we just recently partnered with Marisol Rerucha, who is an expert in restorative practices. And our Code of Conduct Committee district-wide actually got to spend the day with her. And then Roosevelt, we also had her spend the day with us, particularly with our clinicians, as well as volunteer teachers that wanted to be a part of the training. So it's an ongoing process, and we're being very thoughtful about how much we roll out with restorative practices to make sure that we are ready, that we are prepared, that we have the professional learning that's required to execute restorative circles in the way that it needs to be done. Because like I said, restorative practices are so powerful, but they can also tap into our souls. They can tap into our emotional needs, our own family histories and things like that. So we're working with our clinicians to make sure that that training is consistent, ongoing, refined, that we're doing deep work together as a support team. As you know, at Roosevelt, we meet every Friday, our clinical team, our school nurse, our administrators, together with our counselors. And so this is a part of the work that we're doing. And even restorative practices can be a morning meeting in a classroom. Restorative practices, it's team building, it's getting to know each other, their interests. It can be something as simple as mindfulness breathing exercises. It can be check-ins with students just to see how they're doing that day, and then following up with them a few minutes later, one-to-one discreetly, just to see if they need some extra support. So when we talk about restorative practices, there's so many different levels to what that looks like, both in the classroom, outside of the classroom, student-facing, peer-to-peer with students, adult-facing as well. And so I hope that gives just a little bit more of an idea of it.
Yeah, it does. I mean, I'm trying to get like a real, and there's no judgment behind this. I'm just really practically trying to get a sense of where we're at. And, you know, because I think like the first time I heard about restorative practices was maybe five years ago on the board, and it's, I've never really kind of understood clearly sort of where we're at in each building. It sounds like in terms of, you know, a group of students that have been involved in some sort of conflict or an issue, we are not quite at the point of like fully, like with a counselor or clinician, or whatever you want to call the facilitator, we're not sort of there with that yet, which is fine. I'm just trying to get a sense.
I think we're still working towards this. You're right, it was about five years ago, I think, in the middle of the pandemic that we started to really think about this. We do start with community-building circles, which is part of a restorative feature at our young level. However, I think we do need to commit some further professional development for teachers to be able to use this. Currently clinicians are the ones that I think support the most with this type of practice if there's a conflict student to student, or if there's a student themselves that just may need some quiet space or is having trouble focusing on the classroom. They might need to have an adult-to-student kind of session. But we do need a little bit more support in the coming years.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I was just trying to get a sense of, of where we're at, what's, what's actually being done. I know that it's, it's one of those things that, there are various different studies that say like what age, rate, age range is this ideal for, and I don't know. So there's necessarily even a total consensus on that. So I was trying to get an understanding of kind of like where, where we've landed. It sounds like we don't totally have like an answer to that yet, which is fine, too. But that's kind of what I wanted to, what, what you just said is what I wanted to understand. So thank you very much. And thank you, you know, I don't, I'm not going to redo all the sentiments of my fellow trustees, but I share them, and I just wanted you to know that. So thank you very much.
I think the restorative practice conversation, good data point to add to our code of conduct in our fall.
We just had it, well, I was going to save that for a board dialogue, but we did have a meeting and we did model some of those practices. And I'm, thank you for opening up your school home to us for that. And you were there as well, thank you for your participation. It was great to see, like, I think you mentioned that earlier, modeling some of these things that we want to implement, and so that was a very good experience. But I'll talk about it more during the board dialogue.
Are we done with this? We can release, release you back to your homes at this late hour. Thank you so much for your presentation, for your hard work every day, not just today. Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
All right. Item three on our agenda is audience recognition. I'm seeing none in person. So we'll move ahead to our consent agenda. I'll take a motion for 4.1, 4.2, and 4.3.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just on 4.1, just to clarify, that doesn't cost us, us being the district, anything, does it?
No, it doesn't. And I'm glad you brought that up for discussion, because I just wanted to highlight this. So this is a, basically a resolution. If I, if I read it correctly, we as a board had decided to advocate for basically traffic ticket cameras to be mounted to a school bus stop signs. And so as a board, we had advocated for that, and the wheels of the bureaucracy related to that had kind of turned slowly, but this is. This is, this is the result of that work. Yes, Mary?
Yes, yes, and a recommendation from the county that this would be the next step.
Excellent. So I'm, I saw this in the consent agenda, and I was excited about it. Is there any further discussion? All right. Let me read them. 4.1, resolution to approve an opt-in agreement to participate in Westchester County's school bus stop armed safety program. 4.2, resolution to appoint a medical examiner. 4.3, resolution to approve the minutes of the special meeting of April 16th, 2024. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. All right, 5.1. I'll take a motion for 5.1.
Second.
All right, 5.1, motion to accept recommended placements of special education students. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. All right, I'll take a motion for items 6.1 through 6.3.
Still moved.
Second.
All right, resolution, 6.1, resolution regarding award of bid 2024-2025 district-wide Andover Controls Service and Monitoring Agreement. 6.2, resolution regarding award of bid dumpster service 2024-2025. Resolution regarding addendum to lease with MEM Realty of Westchester. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. All right, I'll take.
I don't mean to interrupt, I know we're in the consent agenda.
You know, sometimes I just get going.
No, that's fine. Did we open it up for public comments?
We did.
We did? Okay, it went past so quick over my head, I didn't even hear it.
There was no, as you can see, there's nobody here, but there was also nobody online.
Almost had been another world.
I'll take a motion for 7.1 through 7.14.
Still moved.
Second.
All right. 7.1, resolution regarding professional staff resignations. 7.2, resolution regarding civil service staff resignations. 7.3, resolution regarding support staff resignations. 7.4, resolution regarding bus attendant resignations. 7.5, resolution regarding professional staff appointments. 7.6, resolution regarding bus attendant appointments. 7.7, resolution regarding professional staff appointments before after-school programs. 7.8, resolution regarding civil service staff appointments before after-school programs. 7.9, resolution regarding support staff appointments before after-school programs. 7.10, resolution regarding professional staff appointments, summer school programs. 7.11, resolution regarding civil service staff appointments, summer school programs. 7.12, resolution regarding support staff appointments, summer school programs. 7.13, resolution regarding APR, Annual Professional Performance Review Accountability. 7.14, resolution regarding approval of school volunteers. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. We've come upon our second audience recognition. These have hit very close to one another today. Again, seeing none in the audience. Again, seeing none in the audience. Do we have anybody online? All right. Now on to Board Reports and Dialogue. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share? I know some committees have met, or would meet soon.
We had a meeting of facilities, which I think myself, trustee Benton, trustee Schnicker ran with the full committee, and our superintendent was on as well. There's some, looks like there's quite a lot of progress made to look at what are the things that we could do sensibly, and also to keep what we have, but also look at where we could look at it from a lens of being much more fiscally sound, and by way of costs. So there are some items that are in there. I think there's going to be a, probably, there'll be a meeting tomorrow, and then we're going to probably have a board presentation subsequent to that, that'll give us, give the community a view of it. You know, some, there are some aesthetic changes, but it hasn't changed the purpose and use of the facilities. I think there are some things that we looked at that made sense, and there are some things that made even more sense, because it was like impeding upon, like example was the, like over at Claremont, I think we were looking at like something that probably would have taken up space that, on the bus staging area, that we've kind of looked at and said, what could we do differently there? And I think we had a presentation by our contractors that looked at creative ways of doing things, and smarter ways of doing things, which I think will be interesting. So I think we as a board, we need to take a look at the various options, and there will be options laid out as to what they are, and we'll be talking about that more in a presentation. Probably have a little bit more of an update tomorrow in the facilities committee meeting. So, you know, stay tuned, more to come on that. But I thought it was a very good and informative, and a very, very out-of-the-box way of thinking, and I do appreciate the fact that you went on a site visit, looked at everything, and really tried to assess what we could realistically do while not sacrificing a lot, and at the same time being very thoughtful about it in the process. So thank you.
And again, it's a board decision, we took really, you know, those on the facilities committee will hear some of it, but the board will be making decisions on those options, but also the idea of, do you do it as an ad alternate? For example, when you bid out something, if you get favorable bids and it falls within the scope, you can add something. Also, it could be an alternative proposition on a upcoming referendum as well. So you, so there would be a lot of really solid decision-making, and you'll get the finances for that meeting to help inform.
Yeah, and I'll just add one last thing to that, is that the intent here of everything that's in there is to minimize the impact on the tax levy for what would be in those outer years. And so I think the amount of work that went into that was pretty extraordinary, to go through it with a fine-tooth comb and look at what ifs, what ifs, what ifs, what if we did this, what if we did that? And it, there was, it's a lot, honestly, and overwhelmingly a lot. So I think it'd be a really great discussion. I'm looking forward to some pretty robust discussions for us as a board, and, you know, particularly with the community as we're going out to talk about this.
All right. The Self-Governance Committee met, if either of one, I'll talk about it if neither of one of you want to, but I'm happy to talk about it.
If you're happy, I'm happy.
All right. So we had our inaugural meeting, and I think for the, probably the next couple of times we meet, we'll be finding our footing as far as establishing norms for what our own expectations are for ourselves. And then we did some of the work that we felt most pressing, as far as, we mostly discussed our board self-evaluation, which I think somehow got lost in translation, because we agreed on dates, and then for it to be posted, and it's open now, so I don't think that's that big of a deal, but just so you know, it's open now, our board self-evaluation on SuperEVAL. One of the issues that came up, that I think maybe we want to discuss just a little bit with the board, this is what I'm saying based on the feedback, the discussions we had as a trio. Every time Illy has to open up the self-evaluation as it is right now, she has to communicate with the vendor in order to do that. So she, we can grant her administrative access, but she needs our permission in order to do that. So I think the only question I had was, is does doing that give Illy, you know, access to, like, our superintendent evaluations, for example, which she really doesn't need? Or is it just like a, I can open it and close it thing?
If you provide support, any access that I may have as an admin would need to be intentional.
Okay. So we can say, she can have access to open and close it?
Correct.
And that's all we need her to do?
Correct.
Okay. That answers my question about that, but I think we just, before we gave her the greenlight, we wanted to make sure, in the spirit of transparency, am I, tell me if I'm getting it wrong, Melissa.
You're not getting it wrong.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing it up, because I know you asked as a committee, but I suggested that we bring it to the board, because I thought, just in the spirit of what, how committees operate, it'd be best to bring that kind of decision to a board, even if we're able to limit her access. I think it's still, you know, it should not be a unilateral decision by a committee. So thank you for bringing it up.
Yeah, I think we're just looking for like a greenlight, that that's okay, it'll make it, I think, Illy's job a little bit easier?
I didn't fully follow that, you're saying if you give Illy, that's who we're talking about, right?
Yes.
Access.
Yes.
She would be able to read what's in there?
No, that's what she's saying, is we could decide to say Illy can read what's in there, but we would have to specifically allow that. Right now, we would just be saying she can have permission to post the evaluations and open and close the windows.
Right, but did that access, this level of access, permissioning, does not give her the ability per se to read what's in there?
Right.
Correct. Right.
Yes, that stuff should be confidential.
That's a no-brainer for me, I'm a green light.
So I, we don't have to formally vote on it, but I think we're just doing it for a green light.
Right, no, it's not a vote, it's just transparency.
Yeah, just a green light situation. If like speak now forever, hold your peace.
Yep.
Okay. Got it, Illy?
Got it.
Okay. Is there anything else?
As far as the Governors Committee, no, I mean, we've kind of done our, you know, inaugural kind of meeting stuff, and gotten some of the immediate needs of the board kind of outlined, the next steps. So I think you covered it very well, and that was the only lingering to do, is to get a, you know, green light from the board on that. Make her ready to go.
What about comms? Getting comms committee?
Communications Committee met, there's a survey out now, open to the public, please take it. It's the final survey regarding the mascot. I don't know how much of a board report we need, because in our committee, before we, you know, while we were discussing kind of next steps, we expect some sort of results and presentation about those results in June. As a committee, we had decided, I think the board is going to want to have a more personal feedback session with Nicole Reese about, just to kind of take everyone's pulse, and I believe she was able to meet with everybody individually. So if you've met with Nicole Reese, you're up to date on the communication stuff, right, Rob?
Yep.
Okay.
You know, the one question I had, on the survey itself, you can take it multiple times, and so if I went on there like right now, if I wanted, if I wanted to take it, take the survey like 100 times, I could.
I'm not sure to what extent there's a way around that. Like, I took the survey three times, because I took it once for myself, and then I took it with my seven-year-old, and then I took it with my nine-year-old, and we took it all, and I, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So you don't want to.
So on SurveyMonkey, I know this, just because I have.
Yeah.
I do use it quite often. SurveyMonkey does have a feature to be able to, and it does log IP address on there, and if it looks like, you know, let's just say if I went in there.
Right.
Over the past hour, I decided to go on a rampage and start going 100 times to do it, and assuming I'm anybody anywhere.
I.
That there's a way to kind of look at that.
Right.
And I don't know who is going to be looking at data, is it?
It's Joy Riot.
Okay, Joy Riot. If there's a way to kind of like look at that, and look for some sort of irregularity in that.
We can forward that concern along to them.
Yeah, that would be good.
And I'm sure they'll notice any suspicious activity in their, you know, in their analyzing of the data, but we'll, we can certainly, I can certainly pass that along.
That would be good, because in SurveyMonkey can actually look at an IP address and say, sorry, you've already answered this, your survey's already been answered.
Right.
But when you leave it open, you can answer it as many times as you want to.
Okay.
Just FYI.
Yeah, then that might have some difficulties if you're one household operating off of one computer.
Right.
But everybody wants to take this. So it's like.
You probably could say, look and say like, hey, this household filled out the survey 100 times.
Like 100 times.
That's suspicious, right?
Yeah, some kind of cap.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, it's, it's just like looking at an irregularity like that, that could.
Right.
Do something.
Okay.
Tip the results.
Well, I'm happy to pass along that, that concern.
So Code of Conduct Committee also met between our last board meeting. We have another meeting coming up in June, but that meeting kind of started diving into some of the, how, and it's great, because this is, you know, conversations that constantly come up, and that I've brought up periodically around data, and how that informs a process, how that informs decision, how that informs approach. And so that was a key part of some of what we dived into during the Code of Conduct Committee meeting, around specifically how that's utilized with either behavioral interventions, or just behavior in general. And so we did also go through a restorative practice exercise ourselves, which I thought was very enlightening, especially going into this type of deep dive of the work around code of conduct, I thought, for us as adults, you know, and just keeping the integrity of that meeting, just an overview, it was a great, you know, process for everyone to have experienced, and kind of sense what that looks like in practice, and what the vulnerabilities that come up around that. So to, some questions that I had that come out of that is questions that I've already answered, asked before around how our data is being utilized in that regard, because we definitely have, are starting to find our footing when it comes to data being utilized for academic interventions, but I don't think we're quite there when it comes to how data informs behavioral interventions, behavioral patterns, different things, because I think what we're trying to do as a district is develop a code of conduct that is in line with our, the rest of our standards and the rest of our values around equity. And so I would like to figure out as well, because I think I asked this last presentation around particularly how DeSella's work, I think that's probably the only person who hadn't come back and revisited at the end of the year to kind of give us a well-rounded view of the year, and maybe some asks of the board of how we can support her work, and how that integrates with all the other systems in place. I think tonight's presentation did very well to show how they are utilizing that, but I think this outlier still remains around the code of conduct and how we utilize a lot of the data, which I think is a lot of the intention around some of the SEL supports as well, in addition to academics. So I'm curious as to how we can remedy that, as far as, I'm not sure why we didn't really get an end of the year wrap-up from her, why she wasn't kind of included in this process, but I think just kind of if we can dive deeper, whatever format that's appropriate, to kind of figure out how that's integrated into this process of informing that. So we have another meeting coming up, we'll see, we'll be diving deeper into the code of conduct policy and some of these touchpoints, but it was a great, in my opinion, you know, start to the work for this year. Usually takes place around this time, so, but that's about it for me, from that.
I think I'd just like to add, Melissa, you bring up a great point, because it was a conversation, DeSella wasn't the only one, all the other directors didn't come back for a wrap-up piece, and Jessica and Maria also could, particularly on ARC, we could give, so again, it's something to consider, do we, you know, we schedule that, and I'm sorry, Kim, I left you out of that too, we didn't have a special ed end of the year either, so something to keep in mind when we do this now, moving forward.
And I can also give a little bit of a response around the question related to the social-emotional piece and tiered interventions. That is some of the work that Dr. Lopez and I are creating this year, well, end of the year, and thinking about next year. Some of the work that we are thinking and we're considering is how Dr. Lopez will now be able to support each of our buildings, working individually with the clinical staff, helping the clinicians really go through the DASA data, as well as the panorama and discipline referrals, so that they are now included with a keen eye through the MTSS process, and how to address students with tiered interventions, and outlining what tiered interventions would be most appropriate to address students in certain categories, and address their individual needs. So that is a really big topic that Dr. Lopez and I have started, and framing and outlining that work for the upcoming school year.
Thank you.
And we actually have a meeting coming up with the middle school and high school principals to begin outlining the work at the secondary level first, because we also recognize that some of our needs at the secondary are really critical. So we're starting with secondary first, and that meeting is coming up the first week in June.
Melissa, I, unless I missed it, I think I'm actually on that committee. Do you know who attended the code of conduct?
I didn't keep attendance, but I mean, there were several people there. Are you on that committee?
I think I, yeah.
Maria knows.
Because I don't remember getting an invite, so if I missed it, that's on me, but I think it's, it's you, Frank, and me with Annie as the alternate from the board.
That's the board committee, because for the code of conduct, I'll check with Dr. Dealey, I work closely with Dr. Dealey regarding the code of conduct, the district one, and I'll make sure that you are invited.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, because I don't, just for disclaimer, I don't schedule the meetings, I send out the invites, so I appreciate the inquiry, but it's not my wheelhouse.
All right. Anything else? All right, we have no executive session tonight.
Did we add a request?
I did, I did send a request to the board, if the board does not mind.
I don't know how to explain.
Under FERPA.
Okay. In that case, I'll take a motion to enter into an executive session for a matter regarding FERPA.
So moved.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Student privacy.
Okay. Opposed? Abstentions. All right, we'll be in executive session to discuss FERPA or student privacy concern.